We'll call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors on Wednesday, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, seven P. M. in room fifty-four, the Dunn County Government Center. The first order of business is, as usual, a pledge to allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
I am.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business is call of the rule.
Supervisor Lauffer. Supervisor Lauffer is present. Supervisor Breslin is joining us online. Supervisor Headland is here. Supervisor Score is here. Supervisor Shackleton is present. Supervisor Gary Bjork is here. Supervisor Wilsie is here. Supervisor Quinn is joining us online. Supervisor Jetson is excused. Supervisor Bashan is joining us online. Supervisor Kinnear is here. Supervisor Barrier is here. Supervisor Calabrese is excused. Supervisor Lyon is here. Supervisor Vogel, supervisor is here. Supervisor McCullough is joining us online. Supervisor Story is here. Supervisor Vandermeulen is here. Supervisor Burnt is excused. Supervisor Morehouse is here. Supervisor Hagan is here. Supervisor Thomas is joining us online. Supervisor Prochnow is joining us online. Supervisor Gilbert is joining us online. Supervisor Larry Bjork is here. Supervisor Bauer is here. Supervisor Wolf is present. Supervisor Hartung is here. And Supervisor Steen is also here.
Thank you, Andrew. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. What is the board's pleasure? I have a motion from Supervisor Morehouse. Is there a second? I have a motion, a second, from Supervisor Headland. Any discussions, corrections?
Chair Steen, there were a couple of corrections that Supervisor Bashan sent in. There were a few resolutions that said ordinances and ordinances that says resolutions. I'm going to blame post-election confusion on those. They have been rectified.
Okay, thank you for that information. We'll move ahead with the corrected minutes. There's motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Next order of business is number five, presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. Five A. I would like the board to rise and have a minute of silence in honor of Jeff Reynolds, a seventeen-year employee of Dunn County Sheriff's Department who was killed here a week or so ago, and also in honor of Officer Sam Miller of the Menominee P. D. Please rise. Five B, retirement Nick Lang Corporation Council on one eleven, twenty-five, thirty years of service, and Brenda Osman, social worker, neighbors of Dunn County, on one three, twenty-five, thirty-seven years. And we'd like to thank those people for their years of serve, faithful service for the county. Next order of business, public hearing, none. Is there anybody here that, from the public, that wants to talk? Public comment? Seeing none, then we will not have any public comment. Thank you. Appointments. Appointments by the chair have been provided. As you see, the Library Planning Committee, that needs, that's a chair appointment and needs board confirmation. Library Planning Committee, Claudia Hackett, Johnson, St. Creek Library, Tim Lauffer. I would entertain a motion to that effect. Supervisor Kinnear moves. Supervisor Vandermeulen, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The other appointments that you have in front of you are the chairs and not mine, the real chair, just so you know. And I do make a comment here, we don't have very good attendance this evening. Evidently, a lot of people don't want to work with the B team, so I understand. There you go. Next order of business is the report of the county manager. Ms. Corpora, would you care to enlighten us?
Good evening. So I'm going to start tonight with a couple of retirements. So it always messes a bit with our reporting these out to you, and we have those months where we missed meetings. So I realized, as I was sitting here, that we had two important retirements also in December, which were not acknowledged. And we used to do a plaque, and now we do, actually, we do chamber dollars because people voiced that there really wasn't much to be done with a plaque. So we had Troy Stowell from, who was a surveyor in Environmental Services, who retired in December, and he had been here, I believe, thirty years. And Vicki Wentey, who was in the Department of Administration in the Finance Department, who had been here more than twenty, I don't remember exactly, because I just grabbed them when I was sitting here. And then I also wanted to take a moment to say, I would like to introduce, if she would just stand, we have Tammy Trexler. Tammy is our new zoning and planning administrator in replacement for Anne Wadarchek, who resigned back in December. Tammy comes to us, she's been with us for a couple of years, and she comes to us with twenty-ish years of experience in St. Croix County in the same, in similar capacities. So we are very fortunate to have her here. Per dios, over forty thousand dollars. Any questions about those? Beata is doing a great job of giving you a little bit of background about them. All right. Let me do a really quick update on our, I just think it's important for you to, because it is a significant investment of staff, time, energy, and resource, as well as ultimately financial investment to be made. But in the purchase of our new finance system, we have selected a vendor, actually, more than one vendor, vendors that work in collaboration with each other. So the primary ERP system is, we're going to work through a contract with a company called BSNA. And then our, we will supplement that with a timekeeping system from a company called Andrews Technologies. And then we currently utilize our, on our H. R. side for onboarding and recruiting, we use NeoGov and will continue to use them. We may also use NeoGov to fill in some of the gaps for those other two, but we won't know that until we're finished with our contract negotiations. We will meet with those companies next week to do those negotiations and hope to have a contract in place shortly in February and move forward with the next stage, which will be coming up with an implementation plan with those companies. So we're excited about that. They came in, those particular, that particular group came in nicely at what we were able to afford. Some of the systems are, just like when you're purchasing any other major purchase, have lots of bells and whistles, but they also have lots of cost that goes with that. Any questions about that? Kudos again to all of the people that are really working hard to make that all happen. And then the last thing, I put it in your packets, I just think it's worth noting, because it sure adds up quickly, is our two thousand twenty-four sales tax revenue. So this is that half a percent that you pay in Dunn County for any taxable goods and services that are purchased here in the county, including internet sales. And we budgeted for about four and a half million dollars, and our revenue came in on that particular line at six, sorry, five point two million dollars. So we were about six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars over revenue, gathered more revenue than we budgeted for in two thousand twenty-four. So you'll see that reflected then when the audit figures are final, and you see that number, that, those numbers that sometimes, hopefully, I don't know any reason that they won't, money that will go back into the, our general fund balance, that would be part of that money, that would be reflected in those numbers. Any questions about that?
Supervisor. Thank you. I see in February, almost a million dollars. Do you know, was it an event, or do you know what?
So, I can't, I can't not say this, okay? We could tell you, but we'd have to kill you. I've just been wanting to say that in public for forever. So we do know, the, it is not expected to be something that's repeated. It was a large sale, and Dan and I had to sign non-disclosure agreements with the Department of Revenue in order to know, because we had the same comment. And in fact, on a Wisconsin Counties Association call, they're like, and I'm sure Dunn County knows why they have those, you know, they're doing so well, and we're like, we don't have any idea. But, so if, I guess, without perhaps saying too much, just think about the fact that things like major renovations of systems within manufacturing or processing would also be part, because they're purchased here, would also be part of what drives that revenue.
Not reoccurring in one time.
A non-reoccurring in a one time. Yep, we don't expect that we'll see it again.
Any other questions?
All right.
Seeing none. Thank you, county manager Corpora. Item number nine, reports of departments. Transit is the first one.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Transit annual report for the year two thousand twenty-four. Last year, I had a few other presenters, and tonight I'm all by myself, so ask the questions as much, as much as you'd like. Agenda tonight, talking about ridership, rural service, which was a key point from a few supervisors, looking at what we could do to expand that in last year's meeting. Financials, improvements we've done on the route, looking forward into two thousand twenty-five. A look at our current staff, and any questions? All right, this first slide, looking at the stout route. The top picture up there is the daytime stout route that goes from seven seventeen in the morning till five o'clock at night. It's a figure eight, three-stop loop from Red Cedar Hall, the clock tower in the middle, and then the U. W. Library on the bottom. One thing we implemented last year, that's been in for three semesters now, is the bottom loop. That goes all the way to Walmart and Marketplace from five P. M. to nine P. M. on the back half of every hour for the stout students and community members that would like to utilize that. Looking at the ridership for two thousand twenty-four on the stout route, it showed a bit of a downtick from two thousand twenty-three's record numbers, but this is a route that's extremely based on weather. We've had a very mild spring and a very mild fall up until the last couple of weeks. Stout graduation and the end of the university route was December twentieth of this year. Two days later than normal, the finals went through Friday of evaluation week that used to run through Wednesday. So we gained a few riders that way. We had a great year with our improvement on the annual feedback survey last spring. We'll get another one here this spring. Less complaints for packed buses with these larger buses that are now in service. I'll talk a little bit about that further into this. And higher ratings for how the students evaluated us. So great to see there. Auction. Bus three eleven and bus three twelve are two twenty-eleven E. four fifties from our fleet that have been only backup buses for a few years. These sidelined, unutilized buses were recently sold on auction to make space. And then three fourteen, one of our larger, two thousand fourteen stout buses, not pictured here, it will be sold this spring, mostly just used on the stout route. We've been seeing capacity issues on those cutaway buses for a few years now, since about two thousand twenty-one, with too many riders for what we have space for on that stout route. So the buses that we had didn't really fit our needs very well, so we took these two buses and this other one this next spring, sent them to auction, and got back in the larger transit bus style to our fleet. Two doors, two thousand six and a two thousand three Gillig. These buses, we're going to have about ten thousand dollars in each, and knew these things go for five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. These buses last for about five hundred to seven hundred thousand miles, sometimes over a million. So for what these buses brought to the table for the price point, double doors, students getting off the back door, boarding the front door, high volume, quick turnarounds, these double the capacity of our other buses. Thirty-eight for the capacity of that top bus, which is a hybrid, it just has heavier, heavy batteries on the top of the bus, but it's almost identical to that lower bus, but a capacity of fifty-one on that bottom bus. They've been in, the one has been in service since October, great reviews on it, and it, the seated capacity of those other ones we were using was twenty-six. So we're doing a lot more with a lot less. This also allows more capacity on that community bus that is a supplemental stout bus at the end of every hour from seven to five. The next route, our door-to-door bus service. When you see the bus that drives around town and says doorstop on it, well, what is that bus? That's a door-to-door bus service for elderly, disabled, and anybody that needs it. It's four dollars one way, picks you up wherever you need, drops you off wherever you need, unlike other buses that are all routed services. Four dollars in town, and then seven dollars one way out of town. You call our dispatch, two to, two hours at least for notice before the needed service, and we'll pick you up. Twenty-five to forty daily riders, and all of our buses and all of our routes are ADA accessible with wheelchair lifts on all of them. The doorstop and Red Cedar ridership for two thousand twenty-four, had a strong year. We still see ridership staying consistent on the doorstop and Red Cedar routes while the community route rises. Riders that choose and are able to use the community route, if they live close to the route that it goes on, they save money and we save capacity to help more people with the doorstop route, increasing ridership between the two. This was a large talking point at our meeting last year. And what we are going to put into place in June of this year, a pilot program for rural service that goes to all the outskirts of Dunn County. One day per month, riders call in advance for a ride into Menominee or wherever they need to go within this region. We split service into four zones. Dunn County is made up pretty well of four rectangular areas of northwest, northeast, southeast, and southwest, and then that radius in the middle is what we can normally handle with our already in-service doorstop service in town and out of town. This was done in collaboration with Dunn County's A. D. R. C. and Tracy's team. We currently have a volunteer driver program that picks up people in all of Dunn County and takes them where they need to go, whether it be into Menominee or into Eau Claire or the Minneapolis V. A. And pre-two thousand twenty, there was around ten drivers that were part of the volunteer program. Since two thousand twenty, there's been one, up to two at some points, and back down to one. It's very hard. They only get paid mileage, and that appointment might be two, three hours long, and they're sitting there waiting for that person to get done, getting paid mileage back and getting taxed on it to boot. So it's been extremely hard for A. D. R. C. to recruit, and they're doing all they can. So we looked outside the box, what else can we do? Because they have funding to help out with some of those rides in that volunteer driver with their funding that they have for that allows us to go further into these outskirts. More details are still getting ironed out with this, but for example, we look at what we have for rides Tuesdays and Thursdays. I know are lower volume than Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays for our doorstop service. So someone calls in from the northwest side by Connersville or Boyceville or Knapp, and then the first Tuesday of every month, that's the quadrant that that route goes into. Riders call the day before, and then we just build a route, just like we would in town, the most efficient way to get them into town for an appointment, grocery shopping, whatever they'd like, then they can link up to the in-town doorstop bus or the community bus. And most likely, it would work the best if we took them back three, four hours later in early afternoon before our ridership got heavy again from two P. M. to about four P. M. Still in the works, but some cautious optimism that this will work pretty well versus the fixed routes that went into these cities before that didn't have good ridership, and if nobody calls for the bus to go out there, there's no money spent versus an empty bus that drives up to Colfax or Boyceville, ought to drive back into town. If it's an elderly or disabled individual that needs that service, they would still need to get driven into town by someone, which kind of defeats the purpose of a fixed route bus coming up there. I sent a lot of information out, you're right there, and this was a talking point of last year, so I think this could be a good spot that we can talk more on this, if anybody has questions, comments, concerns, that sort of thing. Other ideas to expand on this?
Supervisor Hagan.
Hi, thank you. This is exciting. I'm looking forward to this. I was wondering, leading up to the June implementation date, what have you been doing to reach out to the communities to let people know that this is going to happen and get kind of people aware that this is starting up before it actually begins? Like, do you have posts in community centers, grocery stores, gas stations, that type of thing, or how are you reaching out to everyone?
You are the first to hear about this tonight, other than our Transit Commission. So we're ironing out, ironing, ironing out details with, I only brought this up to the Transit Commission a couple of months ago, met with A. D. R. C. on Tuesday, yesterday. So that will go out in all forms of communication. We were going to get a newsletter put out with Doug Mel. He put together that last Transit communication, as well as any other ideas that you have that are, are great with your local municipalities that, that you come from as county board supervisors. Definitely take any communication avenues that you think could be a good fit to, that we might be overlooking.
Any other questions for Supervisor Headland?
No, just good luck with that. I hope it works out. I know you and I talked about it for a while, and glad to see you, you know? And hopefully, we learned enough, early enough, that we can tweak it if necessary and make it to, you know, work for the long run. It's one thing in a rural area, I think that, that we're start, you know, starting to see, I know, see it in Boyceville with people calling and saying, where can I get a ride? You know, or do you know anybody that's going to Menominee today, and things like that? So, you know, it's not going to be every day, but again, people schedule appointments in advance, and, you know, if it works really well, maybe, you know, we make it twice a month, but thanks for giving it a shot. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. One day a month definitely isn't the most, but it, it's a start, and the biggest thing is not burning resources. Dollar rides for local share is, is hard to expand and maintain for our ridership. So the last thing we want is for, to burn resources when, when they aren't getting well utilized. But the great thing about this is, if nobody calls, we don't send a bus out there, and hopefully, we can build off this. I know when I schedule a dental appointment, I need to do it six months in advance at least, so those twelve times a year, we come to that quadrant. Maybe, you know, if somebody needs a checkup at Mayo or anything like that, we can start getting in that rhythm. And we've seen over the past four years that we've made these changes to the community route. We saw small increases in ridership that first year, and then it really took off. So it will take more than a year to see the results. So with that, we can tweak things, and, you know, five years later, or four years later, since we built that community route out, there's things we could still tweak and make better. So we can do that with this, too. But it's a, it's a start.
Supervisor Lauffer.
Yes, thank you. Do you project that the fees that are charged for these services will be sufficient to cover the costs of, of what you're doing for the people, or will it be subsidized from another area to cover the costs?
So I'll go into depth on kind of how our funding needs to calculate out to balance at the end of the year on a, on a big scale, but it all depends on how many riders we get to be able to use that same, that same day that they take back into town. That ride that takes an hour out of the day to go up into a quadrant, if we pick somebody up in Ridgeland, that sort of thing, it would probably cost about sixty dollars, and we'd be getting fifteen dollars from the A. D. R. C., covered a hundred percent by them, and then maybe eventually scaled back. So the individual covers fifty percent, A. D. R. C. covers fifty percent, but that probably covers about twenty-five percent of what the ride actually costs to do. So I'll get into the, but if we, you know, if we get to that fifty percent by having two riders that come into town, that's kind of, that's kind of that, that break-even point, because you need to cover fifty percent of your operating expenses with local share. So that would do it, unless it was another subsidized organization, City of Boyceville, for example, covering, you know, twenty-five percent of that ride. Then one fifteen-dollar ride into town is covered, something like that. But yeah, good question.
Thank you. Supervisor McCullough.
I just wanted to note that Austin's been doing really outstanding work. One of the things that I very much appreciate about him as a, I'm sorry, Transit Director is every time I hear from him, every time I've seen him doing something, he's always trying to find new ways to optimize. At the beginning, it was mostly technological, but just doing an outstanding job for us. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a point of information Supervisor McCullough, they're not going to be going to Hawaii. So just so you're aware of that. Any other questions for Austin? Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Thank you. What I was just noticing was that 2024 team updates, that all the employees are CPR trained and there's Narcan that they've been trained and there's Narcan in the buses. So I think that's really very, very helpful. Hopefully never need it, but it is there.
That is, yes, very, a very good point. And we're very happy that the Menominee P D. and a couple other organizations came and trained us on the Narcan training. It's real early this year or in 2024, or it was December, November 23. But yeah, that is in every bus. It's actually two, two doses in every bus. And just another good thing we're able to add. CPR training, A E D. training, first aid training as well, has been a great thing for the individuals to had, have. Thankfully, we've never needed it, but we did have an individual that had a seizure on the bus. There was thankfully a Mayo nurse that was riding home from work on the bus with that individual, with our drivers. So the driver just focused on calling into dispatch. I radioed into 911, the bus was there. So we haven't needed it thankfully, but it's been a great thing to have and stay up to date on with the two-year certification.
Any other questions? I, I just want to comment, Austin, thank you for the willingness to look into making things work or adjusting them to try to make them work. I live in Colfax and I'm hopeful that our elderly folks, myself included, I guess, would take advantage of this. And a lot of times the county services, people aren't aware of them. So I would urge as much communication as you can have on this with the village boards, the nutrition sites, whatever you, you think, the more information out there, the better we have. Thank you very much, Austin.
Since I've been here, my main focus on the routes has always been the community route. Because when I started here, and I sound like a broken record, but it was whenever the university students were out, I drove for Dunn County Transit back in 2016 for about six months. And when I drive the community route, if class wasn't in session, sometimes there'd be zero, one or three riders a day. So the goal was to increase it. The only way was up. So 2024 was our best year ever for the community route. 2023 was our best, best year ever for total ridership. But 2024 was the best year ever on the community route with even a 12% increase on ridership versus 2023. So every bu, every bus shelter had verbiage in it. Every bus shelter had brochures in them, but they all had great display cases and it's just something I overlooked for a little while of how can we improve more? We teamed up with Krista, our website specialist, and with her great graphic design skills as well as the stout S S A. helped out with some of this too. Is the diagram on the top right corner, how to ride the bus, where it goes, what time does it run, where's my bus, that Q R. code in the bottom right side of that, as well as the updated GPS systems that we have in every bus. The other ones were about six, seven years old. Didn't have good signal, they would drop out. That was one of the biggest complaints from the stout kids as well as any community rider that utilized the bus. They just weren't reliable. So we spent some money and got the better GPSs in the summer as well as we rolled out these 31 by 24 pictures, PDFs, corrugated particle board in every of these bus shelters right before Labor Day. And look what it did. Nothing else changed with our route and it just skyrocketed September, October, November and December with just having a little bit more verbiage out there. So that was great to see. And we look forward to 2025 on that route. Next up, the city subsidy decision. Up until 2025, previously Dunn County Transit was one of the many subsidized services and organizations that the city of Menominee gave subsidies to. They were all paired together, but one thing that was a lot different with Dunn County Transit, it was, it was a more of a cost for services situation. So moving forward in 2025, we were able to sit down with the city and get a contract put together so that services always happen with the city versus subsidies that are all lumped together. It was a great thing for the Dunn County Transit and the city of Menominee to move in this direction. And we look forward to, you know, growing that community route and helping out the city as much as we can. All right, Dunn County Transit financials, January through December of 2024. We have about a $607,000 budget and we're going to be around $3,500 to the good this year. I like to have a little bit more left over at the end of the year, but these GPS units were about 700 bucks a piece times five of them. That's 3,500 bucks and a few other things that could have pushed out till next year, but saved in a few other places and one less thing we need to worry about in the future for a while. Dunn County Transit revenue breakdown. Here's a line by line of the revenue sources for Dunn County Transit. We take zero levy dollars from the county budget, starting from the top are our different WIZ dot operating grants. There's three of them. There's our 5311 WIZ dot revenue grant, 8520 WIZ dot revenue grant, 85205. And then next comes our 8521. That actually goes from Wisconsin to Dunn County Human Services. And Dunn County Human Services pays Dunn County Transit for the door-to-door service that we provide as well as the volunteer rider services that Dunn County Transit takes the calls for and organizes the rides for that. After that comes the Menominee city contract, previously subsidy, now contract. U W. Stout subsidy for the university services that we provide. That's an annual contract. And then lastly, our passenger fare revenue, which is the dollar rides for the community route, $4 rides for doorstop route. And then a few different agencies pay for doorstop services as well for individuals that are set up with specific programs. That agency rate is in there as well. And then in 2024, any contra expense that insurance deductible refunds, anything like that. And that's what makes up the Dunn County Transit budget for around $600,000. Anyone curious on how to track the bus? Just dunride.com or searching for the TransLoc app on your iPhone or Android? And if you're just in this GPS coordinates of this area, just say, well, what services are in your area? And it'll show the different routes. It'll also show you, let's say I'm sitting in this building and I need to catch the bus, it'll tell me which bus stop is closest, how much it's going to cost me, and then the next time it's there. So that's been very handy. Advertising options coming soon to Dunn County Transit. We haven't went this route before. And if we're trying to maintain our budget without increasing fares to our riders, looking at other options. This has been a talking point on the Transit Commission for a while. And the thing that really kickstarted it, I think, was these transit buses that came from Bloomington Transit in Indiana. They already had, they're set up extremely well for advertising inside on, right by the handrails, those are 11 inches tall and they can, they're 25 feet long, which you can have many, you know, upcoming events for the university, Winter Days Parade. 90,000 people ride that bus a year. So great visibility inside the bus and out. With the graphics that we put on the transit bus, we already made a advertise here on the back. Earlier today, I reached out to another company that does 11 transit agencies in Wisconsin alone, separate from, you know, just doing bus graphics on what you need. And they take care of everything from contacting local companies to coming to your facility and putting it on. And if it, if you're a small operation and you don't have your own graphics department, stuff like that, or even marketing or sales, that's a pretty nice avenue that I talked about today with individual. So everything as small as, you know, eight by 11 inside, do a 40-foot bus wrap, upcoming options. But when I started talking numbers with them, that really looked, really looked good for what it can contribute to local share because what you bring in for local share really helps out with your total expenses if you have to match it 50%. This has been a talking point for four years since I've been here and about three years before I started. And I don't love it, but it's my job to talk about it. So, and I even, I went back to my last two years of printouts with some of these exact slides on them. And the printouts go into a little bit thicker of a timeline, but, and you can read into it more or ask me questions too, if you'd like. But these buses, a state application was submitted in 2018. In June, Wisconsin D O T. was awarded this low emissions, no emissions grant. In November of 2018, Dunn County Transit received that award for two electric buses, covered 85% by F T. A. and 90% of infrastructure and charging equipment. This company had their tests 65% done, then March of 2020 hit. Then they had to stop their test in that same time and the months after that. Battery manufacturer for them went out of business. Couple different battery manufacturers went out of business in the years after that. We installed the chargers for these two buses in 2022. When I talked at our last meeting, summer 2023, we were told the buses were delayed del Q. 4 of 2023. And recent communication, we are expecting them end of 2025. A few positives to take out of these delays is with the sign P O., the price is locked in. And with that, the base vehicles of these have increased by over $55,000. Since this P O. was written, these buses had 115 kilowatt batteries, which roughly equates to 115 miles on the road in not negative degree conditions. Since then, their technology's improved up to 150 kilowatt battery packs and up to 150 miles. So almost one and a half times the range on these that actually probably would get through a day without charging, you know, at lunch hour, that sort of thing. So we're not in this alone. Bay Area Rule Transit, which is called BART up in Ashland, they have a couple on orders as well, a couple other transit agencies in La Crosse area. So, and that's the update for the electric buses.
Change per charge and then it finishes by saying dependent on ambient temperatures. So how many miles are, you know, if, if it's 20 or 30 below, how many miles does that cut back on the, the ability of that bus to maintain charge in it?
I'm pretty sure that the heaters on these are those small diesel heaters. So unlike an electric heater, which takes a lot of wattage, which to me would take that battery range down pretty quickly, the smaller diesel heaters on these should help out with that. But I don't have a good answer until, for surely I see it in person, but true till we get at least a little bit better. But I'm assuming 20, 30%, but I'm, I'm not positive.
Have they done any studies on that, that you can draw information on? Has there been any studies?
I can get back to you on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think a little bit on this too is, you know, think of lithium battery packs. On a drill, they don't, they do a lot better in the cold than the alkaline ones. So I think it's better than it used to be, but I'll circle back on that.
Excuse me, I don't want to waste a lot of time on this, but I have a neighbor that had a totally electric skid steer. And he was very happy with it at first, but as time went on, all of a sudden he had, started having a lot of problems with the batteries on it. And he's finally abandoned it now and, and given up on it and went back to a conventional skid steer with a diesel engine and stuff, you know. So I don't know that all the bugs have been worked out on all that stuff yet, but I was just curious if there's been any studies, long-term studies on these things that we could base our, you know, our decision on whether or not we should pursue those types of things yet. Like anything, they have to work bugs out of everything, you know. So I just wanted to ask those questions and get it out there. So thank you. Appreciate it.
You never know if you have enough information for everybody and it looks like you're scooting through or if you're having too much. So I apologize if this is a little long, but a couple slides left only. Just this, we used to do our pre and post trips through Google Forms that we put together. They were pretty intense to build them out. 2025 forward, we switched to an app called Drive Rue. Everything from setting a D O T. inspection a year from the date that you pick, it automatically tracks the mileage, gives you a notification right to my phone when somebody's doing their pre-trip, upcoming oil changes, bus driver said it headlights out, goes right to our phone, fix it quicker, back on the road quicker, and then doesn't become a bigger problem. Repacing, replacing brake pads and not hole hubs, stuff like that. Repacing, replacing brake pads and not hole hubs, stuff like that. We talked about this a little earlier. Everyone is trained on NRCAN CPR AED. And then with these new GPS units, we have Wi-Fi in all the buses for the drivers only, not the public as of this point. But what that allows us to do is most of these TVs in, uh, Dunn County have a Yodec unit that allows um, the IT team to post whatever they want, a public-facing TV in the main entryway with different announcements or uh, private TVs to just the highway department, um, crew, stuff like that. This gives us the option to update all of the buses right from one computer rather than get nine flash drives together. So that's coming here this year as well. Years of service, I wanted to touch on this because it's, you know, we try to do our best and, and keep great retention. Uh, years of service for our group uh, on average is four years, two months, and it would be a lot higher than that if we didn't have a, a recent retirement. And a couple others. We have a great team here at Dunn County Transit. Half the crew's been here for over five years and I've been here, uh, before myself when I started in 2020. Uh, the team has grown the ridership back to pre-COVID numbers with the best year ever in 2023, 2024, not far behind. Uh, when many transit systems uh, have never recovered from ridership since 2020. We look forward to a greater 2025.
Any questions for Austin? Supervisor Anna Miller.
How do you manage snow removal at bus stops?
Three drivers, um, take care of three bus shelters each. Stelth bus driver takes care of the two library ones and then the clock tower one. The community driver takes care of the red cedar one and a couple others around town, and then the doorstop driver. Normally, other than a few spots, the snow is plowed or brushed away within six inches to a foot of the shelter unless it's on a concrete pad by itself, not connected to the city sidewalks. Edgewood and 28th. App, the one by Applebee's, Sunset Bus Stop, stuff like that. The rest gets very close, so a couple minutes here and there, those maintained when it's a heavy snow and it all comes before the shifts start. I go out there and, um, shovel them before 7:30 when those first buses come out there. The windows get washed three, four times a year on the bus shelters from, nope, Shine, Shine Bright out of Wheeler. Uh, does a very good job.
I don't, any other questions? I don't see any. Uh, thank you, Austin, for a very, uh, complete report. Next order of business is item 10, consideration reports, resolutions and ordinances to the county board from the executive committee. There are none. Uh, item 11, consideration reports, resolutions and ordinances coming to the county board from the standing committees. 11A Facilities Committee. A1, resolution to award a performance contract. Would you like to introduce that, Supervisor Vogel, or would you defer to Assistant County Manager Dunbar?
I will defer if, if Dan is ready, otherwise I can speak to it as well.
Just going to introduce. So, uh, we provided you a, a staff report related to this. Um, we've had a lot of conversations in the past about the solar and geothermal process. This particular process requires through, through a state statute that we put up to, uh, bid to award this contract. Uh, that bid must be seen by the entire governing body, that is you. Uh, so that was a part of your packet to be able to do that. Uh, prior to this, the Facilities Committee has seen the full bids as well and made this recommendation. That's where that resolution is coming from to accept the bid from Vergey, who is the only bidder that had submitted. But this is your option to look through those bids and have your debate and make your decision. Um, and I, and I would also point out, as we had talked about, this is awarding a contract to Vergey, meaning this is the company that we are going to move forward with. The next steps of that is they're going to be doing a deep dive, getting final numbers, building a final contract, and that contract will come back to this full board for approval before anything happens. So you're not finalizing a contract at this point, you're finalizing the company that we are going to work with to, to build that contract. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Uh, and the plan is that'll come to the board in March.
Uh, thank you, Dan. Uh, I would entertain a motion in a second at this time. Motion by Supervisor Willsey, uh, second by Supervisor Vogel. Uh, any discussion or questions? Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Did we skip to three or did we miss, did I miss A and B? Sale of transfer station, resolution for property by Oaks?
Well, we're, we're on A1 right now, Larry. The, the resolution to award the performance contract of first one under the
Oh, excuse me, I was looking at a facilities committee meeting.
All right, uh, yeah, go ahead.
I did not vote to, to bring this forward. So I feel I can speak, uh, to it. And, uh, what bothers me is that, uh, we, uh, have done business with Northern State's Power Company and/or Excel Energy, and we, uh, also have done business with uh, whoever does the heating and cooling in the Justice Center. And, uh, it just seems to me that if you somehow just, uh, disregard the people that you've done business with in the past, is kind of a poor practice. And the only thing I see really accomplishing, uh, this solar and, uh, um, geothermal is that we're, you know, really making a statement that, uh, we have no confidence in, uh, fossil fuels that have uh, taken us a long ways uh, over the years. I think I think there's a reason why, uh, our electrical power into our buildings come in underground, if I'm not mistaken. And that, uh, uh, because it has a lot to do with result, reliable, constant, 24/7 uh, supply. And I don't think, uh, this company, the packet that we've got shows all their work, uh, has been done in Indiana, Illinois, and one in Ohio. Well, if you remember back last week, uh, if you would be rolling out of Kansas City in I-70 eastbound, you know, you run into a constant, uh, snowstorm for a number of days. So, uh, I don't know why we would trash what's been tried and true and step out on a limb and, uh, assume that something different is going to work. And the other thing is, and this happens all the time with this county. When we moved into this building, we thought it was a $3 million, uh, change to come up here or stay, uh, downtown. But as soon as we got up here, you know, it, it cost us another million dollars. So, uh, looking forward on, uh, other items in the agenda that came before the Facilities Committee, we found out that land around, uh, where we're at right now is worth $100,000 an acre. $100,000 an acre. So if you put solar panels on five acres of that, how do you justify that cost? And then the other thing is an additional cost. And this has come from, uh, discussions with, uh, three, with a 2,000 acres of solar panel going in, uh, my backyard in Town of Spring Brook, is that there's a maintenance uh, of the property. Uh, it is facilities going to hire summer staff or whatever it might be to trim the grass and, uh, keep it presentable? And also, are we taking away five acres of land from our, our NRCS demonstration farm? I mean, is, you know, I, I don't know where your, where the proposal site is, but everything north of the, the jail, I thought, was part of agricultural education, uh, through NRCS. So and then when we first were approached by Vergey, uh, we were expecting $3 million from the federal government on the $21 million project. And now I see no I don't see anything where that $3 million is still going to, to come our way from the federal government. So, uh, are we able to see all the costs? Are we able to recover, uh, federal dollars? And, uh, the scope of work, uh, is pretty detailed on what they're going to do. But if there's any acts of God, which they list as, uh, severe weather, uh, sorry Dunn County, we're not going to guarantee the, uh, payment of that. And if you look, and, and I've tried to put together how much this will cost. But if you go look at $11 million and you divide it out by 20 years, and one time it was even 30 years, it was discussed. You know, it's like $45,000 a month to service that debt. And that's just the principle. It's just the principle. $45,000 a month for 20 years. I congratulate people that are interested in eliminating fossil fuels. You've done a great job here. But, uh, if you can't ask for competitive bids for a conventional system, I think we're cheating the taxpayer of Dunn County. The taxpayer of Dunn County, as their statement right now, first payment due at the end of the month. I haven't opened mine up yet because it puts me in a bad mood. And, uh, I, I, I think, I, I, I think we, I think we have to be responsible to the taxpayers, people on fixed income, farmers that are just taking a beating and every other cost of living that has gone up that we should play, we should pick a political decision to eliminate fossil fuels and not give the cost of the project a, a fair look, uh, with a conventional system. So I've read this until I've been, got a headache. So, what as you like, but I certainly am not going to support it.
Thank you Supervisor Bjork. Supervisor Story?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. I appreciate all of his insight and input. However, I know there's a process that we go through and I believe that process is to entertain bids from all interested parties that might be interested in the project or in this project, and I'm assuming that, that that was done and this was just the only one that came in. Uh, otherwise, I'm wondering, was there any other member of the committee that, that followed up and contacted those other agencies or businesses to see if they were interested or why they were not interested in bidding so that, uh, we could have an answer to that question or if that would help at all.
Thank you Supervisor Story. Would, um, anybody care to address that question?
So, yes, there is a process. So we, just like we do with, like, all of our purchases within the county, and so this, this process that we're going through is something that we do on a fairly consistent basis within county. You don't normally do it as board members. We typically do that in, in administration. The performance contract statute requires that you do that. That's why the committee has been, is involved in that. Um, if you're a member of the Highway Committee or have been or watched Highway Committee meetings, the Highway Committee uh, does get more involved in, in these types of purchase situations as well because that's part of the statute, but uh, ultimately what we do is there's a public website, the State of Wisconsin has, has one that is pretty much used by all government entities to post our requests for biz, requests for proposals. It's the same process our ERP went through where we put it up on that site for a certain number of days, wait for our responses to come back. And then we evaluate these processes, uh, typically, especially take the ERP for example, uh, we evaluate the the results from that uh, proposal independent of the cost. And then we bring the cost in there. So those, those things are evaluated independently in order for us to identify the best product that is for the best price. And so there's kind of a, a matchup of all of that. So this particular one, as the statute does not require price to be a, a factor. Obviously, price is always a factor, but the, the concept around this is that the contract is going to pay for itself. So, so the revenue kind of matches the expenses. There is certainly borrowing that's going to happen. You're not, you're not wrong about that, but the, the idea behind that is that the energy savings over time is what will pay for that system over time. Um, so, so cost becomes less of a factor as, as that's related. But to your point, yes, everybody has had the offer. This specific thing, as we talk about, I bring up Excel Energy. Excel Energy doesn't do this type of work. Uh, they probably isn't in their best interest because the intent here is that we are going to pay them less money so, so we provide our power ourselves. So it saves the grid, but it, it, uh, it isn't necessarily their business to be able to do that sort of thing. So and there isn't a whole lot of companies nationwide that are doing this type of work. Um, and we talked about the government funding. Uh, that's a portion of that that has kind of made this happen. Uh, without, without the government funding, the $3 million still is in play. Um, from the, from the federal government. Without that funding, this, this doesn't work and, and we would not be moving forward with that.
Sure. Money?
Yep, yeah, as part of the, uh, IR Inflation Reduction Act, yes.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you. Supervisor Vogel?
Um, and I would, um, like to repeat that, um, the final contract you know, hasn't been signed and will come back here. Um, and we will look at the costs and the savings and make sure that those savings will pay for, um, to repay the bond and the debt. So, keep that in mind. We still have one round of review before this gets finalized.
And I'll, I'll add to that. The location of where the solar plant panels are will also is still yet to be determined. I, I do expect that they would be in some of that, the field that you were referring to before Supervisor Bjork, but we don't know whether that's all of the five acres or, or how much of that, that's yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions? Supervisor Hagan?
Like to call the question.
Other, there's been a, a request to call the question and I'm, uh, I need a little guidance on this here.
Uh, I believe under our rules, it would be a motion to close debate. Um, I don't think we actually have called the question as the standard part of our interpretation of Robert's rules.
May I append what I say and motion to amend, suspend the rules?
Motion to close debate.
No, just close debate, yes.
We have a motion to close debate. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, who, who second is that?
Supervisor Moore.
Oh Supervisor Morehouse, thank you. I have a motion and a second to close debate. Is that a simple majority? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I can, even though I have good ears, I'm not able to determine what, what vote prevailed. Yes, let's do a roll call vote. And just, just so I understand it, a yes would be to close debate, and a no would be to not do that.
Yes. So Supervisors who are present, if you tap your screen, you can do the motion to close a debate. A yes would be to end debate. A no would be to not close the debate. While the Supervisors present are doing that, can I have, through this, Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough votes yes. Supervisor Thomas?
Yes. Yes.
I believe that was a yes Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor, no. Okay, thank you Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes yes. Supervisor Gilbert, who's online?
No.
Supervisor Gilbert votes no. Supervisor Breslin?
Yes.
Is a yes Supervisor Breslin?
No.
Is a no Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Is, is a yes. Believe we've got everybody, and yes, yes, no. There's a majority that the motion to end debate has passed.
Okay, the motion to end debate is passed. We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Is that just a simple majority? All those in favor? Yes, certainly. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. This will be a, about, this is the motion to award the performance contract for geothermal and solar. The motion was made by Supervisor Wilson and seconded by Supervisor Vogel. All Supervisors present? Nope. Oh, no, because we closed debate, sorry. Do you have a point of clarification?
It is, it is called an intent to award.
Yep. We're working on the fly. Okay. All Supervisors present, can you use their microphone to vote? All those Supervisors available online Supervisor McCullough, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough votes yes. Supervisor Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas votes yes. Supervisor Prochnow, how do you vote? Supervisor Prochnow.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Prochnow votes yes. Supervisor Gilbert, how do you vote?
No.
Supervisor Gilbert, what's no Supervisor Breslin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Breslin votes yes. Supervisor Breslin, how do you vote?
No.
Supervisor Breslin votes no. Supervisor Quinn, how would you vote?
Yes.
Is it Quinn votes yes? Okay. That would be a 22-6. That vote has passed.
Okay, the next order of business is 11A2, resolution preliminary approval to sell transfer station property. We need a motion and a second. Supervisor Vogel moves. Supervisor Moorehouse seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yeah, and Supervisor Moore. Supervisor Vogel, I'm sorry.
So, we, we've discussed this, I think, in this committee about getting it rezoned, which will come a little later, actually. But this is via sealed bid, and the county really hasn't been using it, and we couldn't see a future use for this property. So, that's why the committee brought this resolution to the board. And this is the preliminary, so it will come back. The bids will come back to the facilities, and if there isn't one that we want to accept, then we, it won't come back. But if there's one we want to accept, then we'll bring it back to the full board for approval.
Thank you Supervisor Vogel. Any other questions? Supervisor Larry Bjork?
No, sorry.
Supervisor Bauer?
Yeah, Corporate Counsel, could you get more into your restricted covenant? I mean, you, you said you could put those in there. Do, could you go a little further detail on some of that?
Sorry. And I don't want to say, you could certainly answer that question, but was that related to the transfer station? I think as we had talked about the other ones.
Yeah, it's kind of the same thing, isn't it? No. Oh, that's the big one down here, yeah.
Yeah. But, yes, that's coming up next.
So, I take it you withdraw the question, but you'll bring it up later. All right, thank you. Simple majority again. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is 11A3, resolution preliminary approval to evaluate the sale parcel east of Oakleaf Clinic. We need a motion and a second.
Hold on. Have Ann speak to it.
Pardon?
You want to have Ann speak to it?
Excuse me, we'll have Supervisor Vogel speak about the resolution, not to it, but about it, I guess.
All right, I believe in our packet, there was a memo from Dan explaining the context of how this came to the committee. And, and I'd like to say this is new ground, and we did not exactly agree, but we wanted to bring it to the full board to help us decide whether we want to sell this piece of property or perhaps not sell it, because there could be future uses for this piece of property, since it's close to the county, and whether we should just negotiate with this one developer, which, who had a very good plan and meets the needs of the county, but, but it could go back and be a sealed bid, but, so we have options here, and we just wanted to feel out how the whole board felt about selling, selling more county land, because this is kind of outside of our wheelhouse.
So, before you, before you move forward, so obviously, next step would be that we would be looking for a motion in some way, shape, or form. So, just to let everybody know that resolution that is out there right now is to have, to essentially ask the county manager to move forward with negotiating a sale with the individual that had reached out to, to the county about that sale. If that is something that you're not interested in, then you should make a motion to either send it back to the committee, or you could, or if this moves forward and you vote no to it, it would just kind of die on, die on the vine. At that point, we would not pursue any type of a sale. So, there, if you, typically, you could make an amendment to a resolution, but our board rules require a written amendment, so if you don't have a written amendment that has been prepared ahead of time, then your action would be to send that back to the committee with a little additional guidance on how to move forward with that. So, just wanted to kind of set that up so that you know what you might want to do. But a motion to move forward with that resolution would be to negotiate the sale. If you wanted something else to be done, you can have that debate about it, but send it back to the committee.
Supervisor Shackleton?
You, Mr. Co-Chair. So, this is just to start negotiations, right, and try and decipher a price and stuff like that?
Correct. Before any sale, all sales would require final approval by the board, and that's true of the, the transfer station or, or this one, that sale will always come back. This is really asking the county to essentially put in our time and talk to other people about that.
Okay, so the transfer site, that is going to be sealed bids, and this is just going to be talking to a certain someone, and then see how that goes and bring it before us, or is it going to go up for bids then, or, just depends on what we decide?
May I?
Go ahead.
Supervisor McCullough?
Part of the discussion we had at Exec was essentially a clarification of what the three options are. And so, this, this vote is option one, we are not interested in selling any county land, we're just going to skip it. And I'm, I'm going to go for option two, which is the other likely one. We were approached by a developer who is interested in a project on county land that is within the general keeping of goals the county has laid out. So, this would, so the, moving it forward would be, yes, that sounds like a use that the county would approve of for land, and so we are willing to have a discussion with you about selling that land. The third option is, we would like to sell this land, and we would, you know, consider moving forward with an open bid process. I think that's probably the least likely, because it is a, I, I don't see us in general as selling land unless it is very much within the keeping of, of the county's broader goals. So, that was the context of the discussion we had at Exec, and I thought that would be helpful to the context of this discussion.
All right, well.
Go ahead Supervisor Shackleton.
If that's the case, then I would make a motion to the second one, where to start discussions with, who is interested, I guess.
To adopt the resolution that was?
Yep.
Yeah, we have a motion to proceed what was, I have a second for Supervisor Vogel. Now, does everybody understand what, what we're doing here? Okay? If you don't, please ask, and we'll, we'll try to, Supervisor Larry Bjork?
To just talk to one person that's interested in buying the property and not any, not anybody else?
That is, that is what the resolution says, yes.
Okay, so, okay. So, because it falls in the purview of Dunn County wanting more senior housing, that's why we're even talking about this? I mean, we're, we're, we're talking about Dunn County being in the real estate business and providing more housing. Is that correct?
So, a developer reached forward, reached out to, to county administration to ask if we would be interested in selling that portion of land for, for the use case that, that you brought up, yes, for some senior housing, of which our response was, we will ask the board. And, and that, that's what we're seeing right now. If the board is not interested in moving forward with negotiating with that, with that group for that particular purpose, then we would not move forward with it. But that's, that is the resolution that is at hand, yes.
So, we're, we are dealing only with one person that came to us and says, we want to buy county land to build senior housing. Is that, I asked second again, because?
That is correct.
Supervisor Canaire?
Thank you. In, in response to Supervisor Kelly's remarks on the third option, I thought that the county could put conditions on land that we sell, and perhaps that wasn't clear when it first came to the facilities committee. Is that correct, that if we sell land, we could put conditions or developer's agreement or whatever?
There are, through the negotiation process, we can come up with a sales contract that could talk about what they're going to do with that land and, and, and how they're going to do that, and how we as their neighbor will, will work with them on that. One of the things being, this land comes up against, we call that Forbes Road. It's a private driveway to the, to the neighbors of Dunn County that is owned by the county. If they want access off of that road, that would require an easement that we would have to provide. So, part of those things would be in negotiations. So, yes, there is the, the idea of a restricted covenant or restricted deed. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, excuse me, some, some of you may have been living on property where the developer put restrictions on its use or things you can or cannot do. For example, some of you might have a restriction on your property where you're not supposed to have a camper in your driveway, or limits the size of tool sheds or additional buildings. Were the sale to progress and go through a restricted covenant could be put on the land prohibiting certain behaviors, limited to can only be used for housing, it could only be used for, for adult housing, if that's what, what the, the plan is. But yes, you can put through the land office, I could draft, or I could work with them to draft restrictions on the use of the land, so you make sure it wouldn't become a commercial property or something else.
And I assume, even if we go through with this particular motion with one individual, we would do that, because if we don't do that, a developer could put anything they wanted on there, no matter what they said.
That's correct.
Okay. So, if we chose to do a sealed bid process, we could still do that. We could still end up with something that's good for the county. So, I don't know if everybody understood that right when we have the, the motion on the table right now. It seems like the two options are to sell it or to explore selling it to the individual or explore selling it and opening it up. It, you have a county, it, it seems like you want the most open, transparent thing you can have, and it kind of looks like, gee, we've got one person that came and we're going to go with them. So, that's just my point of view from that. And if we move forward with this motion, and we have some more debate, but if we move forward with this, I think I would like to offer an amendment to the motion that would make it clearer of what we're doing. But I'd like to keep that, and let's just see what happens here.
I, I, I'm, someone better coach me on this, but I think you got to amend it before we vote on it.
Right, right.
Right. I think he would. He's waiting for more debate.
Well, okay.
Supervisor Story?
Well, what I'm interested in here is, obviously, it'd be, it'd be valuable to know how much the land is worth, no matter what we decide to do with it. So, if there's a way, if that's something that would happen as a result of this, that would be great. However, I am not in a position to where I would want to sell at this point in time. It doesn't mean that I wouldn't be in favor of, I mean, housing is obviously something we need, but I guess I'm just right now thinking that there could be possible other uses that we might need for that facility or for that property, and I don't think we've thoroughly investigated that enough. It's something that actually came up in the last meeting with the neighbors. There was some discussion about this and property in the area, and that there could be some other things that might be something we might want to take into consideration in the future. So, I'm not sure which option that is. I guess the option I'd be looking at would be not to sell it at this time, but certainly it'd be not, it'd be okay to find out how much it would be worth.
So, can I, can I speak to that? We do know how much it is worth, and we discussed that at a closed session of the facilities committee. It was closed because that would be part of the negotiation process and tactics, and so we didn't necessarily want to show our hands there. The staff report gave you a rough estimate of, of where that would, where that would fall, but not really the, the exact number.
Given that, I would not vote for selling the property under any option at this point in time. I would want it to go back to community.
Supervisor Canaire?
Would it be, how, how would we send it back to committee right now? What would be the process?
A motion to refer. Motion to refer, a motion and a second to be voted. If it's referred back to the committee, then there's no action taken on the resolution. It goes back to. It goes back to the committee.
Okay, and that would at least tell us where we stand. Right, so.
The motion to refer.
There's a clarification. The motion to refer back to committee would supersede the motion on the floor to approve. So if, if there was a motion to refer back to committee.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to refer it back to the committee.
Okay.
Is there a second? Supervisor Canaire moves Supervisor Lofer seconds. Any discussion?
Can I, can I just provide a little bit of clarification?
Can I just fight?
Yes, it's the county manager, yes.
So I just want to clarify that, that I know it's been talked about, but so someone, a developer approached us about the property. If you think about other developments, that's how the process happens. It doesn't mean it can't go back to a bid. I'm just saying it's not, it's not a, like a secret private club. If you think about Ellsworth Cheese Curd Factory did not respond to a bid for a property where Ellsworth Cheese Curd Factory was built or Hurlbert next to them or the Walmart Distribution Center or any of the other QuickTrip, you know? They approached a landowner and said, are you interested in selling this property? We have an interest in putting something on that piece of property. So that's how that process works. Doesn't mean, I'm not saying you can't put it out on a bid. It's just, it's a, that is the process of development. So they've identified it as a potential piece of property that fits with the needs of what they need and also believe that it would help us for our needs. From our perspective in the administrative, administration side of it, what we're trying to do is save ourselves a bunch of work if you're just not interested in selling at this point in time, which is a decision that you're 100% in the position to be able to make, which is looking for some direction. If you do send it back to committee, then as Dan indicated earlier, we really need you to tell us what it is you're looking for. Because just sending it back, to have it come back in the same form isn't going to be particularly helpful if you're looking for something particular to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. I guess the way I understand this, if this, not, not the motion to refer, but the motion to go ahead and proceed with looking into it, that's all that's going to happen. It's going to come back to us and in whatever form it's in, we're going to vote on it up or down. If, it'll come back with covenants or whatever, but at, at no point in time will anything change hands until the board approves it. So all we're doing is telling them, or if we vote for it, go ahead, look into it, come back because they're going to come back and tell us what the terms are and what the covenants are. If that, if you don't like what you see, you don't have to vote for it. That's my understanding of it. Am I correct on that?
We're currently on the floor with the motion to refer though, so the next vote.
Supervisor.
If I might.
Yeah.
If I might speak to the motion to refer, so the if we refer back to committee, what has happened is the committee said, hey, this looks interesting. Is the county board interested? If we refer it back with no specific charge, the choices of the committee are, we don't know what the board wants. Talk about it a bit, bring it back more or less as it is or as with a, with a bid process or say, we don't know what the, what the county as a whole wants. Shall we, why don't we scrap this choice? So referring back to committee without a charge is not necessarily particularly useful motion. I if someone wants to come up, I would certainly willing to vote for, refer back to committee with some sort of direction. Without a direction, it's, it's sort of punting the ball back and forth between committee and board.
So just a point of clarification. So procedurally, a person who made a motion to refer back to committee could rescind that motion if they wanted to, which would negate the motion to refer back to committee. And we'd go back to the original motion to approve the resolution to find direction on whether the county is interested in selling land. Just a procedural thing Supervisor.
Supervisor Hagan.
Not really at this point because both the county manager and the chairman on vacation kind of stole my thunder with that. But I was also going to bring that up when we refer it back to committee if we decide to do that. Why? Like I, I get the motion, but can we get a clarification on that point before voting for that?
Well, the motion is to refer it back to committee. There's no appendage attached to it. It's just refer it back to committee. What I'm hearing here is that if you refer it back to the committee, well, what do you want? And the way I see this is that allowing management to go ahead and explore this opportunity. And when they come back, do you like it or don't you like it? And if you don't like it, then we've given them some direction, unless, does that make sense? And I appreciate the lesson in parliamentary procedure today. This is invaluable. So I guess if the person that made the motion does, would be interested in rescinding it, we would entertain that. But otherwise, if discussion is done here, Supervisor Moros, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Assuming that we moved forward with permitting administration to proceed with negotiation, do understand that this does go back to facilities and then it comes back with a recommendation to the board. We're not bypassing either the facilities committee or the board if we move forward. And that needs to be clear.
Thank you for the clarification. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Question for Dan or I don't, seeing that I'm on the facilities committee, I'm looking for every piece of information that I can get my hand on. And looking forward, if we're going to be developing property that has residents there or a developer does that. And it, and what's the tipping point for how the traffic patterns would handle? And who has to pay for it if additional housing means additional cars and already a congested area? I mean, does the state just say, oh, no problem Dunn County, we'll put in lights or a roundabout? Or if the developer is on the hook then for lights or, or a roundabout? Or is Dunn County on the hook for lights or roundabout? Can we find out those things ahead of time, Dan?
I can, we can. So typically what would happen there, so this particular property is in a TIF district within the city. So it would be eligible for some of the funds related to that TIF district. Since it is on a city street and associated with a state highway, it would not be on the county to do any of that. And likely that would be part of a development agreement between the city's TIF district and the developer to do traffic studies and all of the work related to that. And would typically be at the developer's dime to do that or, or if the city wanted to put in some money in order to do that, but not the county. How's that for an answer?
Thank you, Dan. You're the man.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you. I just would like to see this move forward so we can explore and just, I know it's going to come, go back to committee, so I would like to just see what it's worth and if it's something we would be interested. So I would like to move forward and vote yes if Supervisor Canaire is going to rescind his original motion.
Supervisor Canaire.
Well, I was told today to make it as difficult for you as possible. Right, Dan?
Wasn't me.
And I understand that sending it back would delay things and not accomplish too much. I think the motion accomplished some more discussion. And I would be willing to withdraw the motion.
Also, who seconded? Thank you. You withdraw the motion and who seconded it, they should withdraw that also. Will you withdraw it Supervisor Lofer?
Question, if there's only one entity that's putting in a bid and in the, in the transparency, to be transparent, why does, why does it have to be a sealed bid? And, and are we going to get to know this stuff so we can legitimately make a decision on what the bid is on it so that we can compare it? Or is that all left up to the committee that this goes back to, to, to discuss this?
So that, then this would be a negotiation, not a sealed bid. So this would be the developer reached out. We, we know a number that would be an appropriate number and we would essentially ask them for more and tie, tie some of those restrictions to it to make sure that they were doing kind of what we wanted. So you would see that ultimate price in the end, but.
Before we would ever be asked to vote on this stuff and everything that.
You would see the full contract.
Okay, okay. Well, then I'll, I'll rescind then as well then.
Chairman Vogel.
Thank you, Chairman. So, so we're back to the original resolution. And so I've, I've heard some back and forth. So at this point, if you didn't want to sell at all, you would vote no. Just so people have that, have that choice if they don't. And then that would save the county from negotiating if, if we don't really want to sell. So I mean, that's basic decision, sell, no sell. So just wanted to point that out.
And.
Who's talking now?
Sorry, me. Supervisor McCullough.
Supervisor McCullough, I don't see you, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for leaping in. Yeah, and even if we vote the resolution forward, we are not in fact voting to sell the property. What we are voting to do is have staff and the facilities committee discuss with the entity that is interested in this, a process. And at any time in that, if, for example, the facilities committee, and I trust them to be very responsible with lands in Dunn County, says, hey, this does not look like a good deal for Dunn County, I would expect them to not bring it back at all. If it looks to them after an in-depth dive into the process, like it might be a good thing for Dunn County, then they would bring it back. And this board will have a opportunity to fully discuss this, decide whether that's a reasonable price, whether that is a use we are interested in, all of those things. None of that is decided by this vote.
Thank you Supervisor McCullough. Supervisor Story.
I would only, I guess my thinking is, is that rather than put all the time into that, there are possibly several uses that could happen with that property. This may not be the time to do anything with that property. This may be the time to do something with that property. But having been on the board for a number of years and having attended convention, there have been other uses that have been brought forward in different meetings that I've been at that would be possibilities. And so it would make more sense to me that there would be time spent in a study of what those potential uses could be rather than rushing it forward and having something done about it. Even if it means we aren't going to vote on it, I just don't know if we want to take all the time to do that right now. And I could give you some examples of that, but you know, because there are some examples of some things that could be done with that property. But that's where I'm at right now with that. So I would vote.
Thank you Supervisor Story. Supervisor Shackleton.
So I guess another question I had is what is, what would be the, besides just the income from the cost of, or from the sale of the land, what would be, means it's in the city, what would be our revenue from that going forward as far as?
It, it's really not anything. So we would have the one-time revenue from, from the sale. In addition to that, if something were built, that would be considered net new construction, which, which could allow us to raise our levy. And then, and then those taxes would be distributed amongst all of the new buildings. However, this property is in a TIF district. I won't get into TIF district math, but that would.
Okay.
It, it impacts it.
Thank you.
We have a request for a roll call vote and I think we should. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Because I've been like farming all my life and I just hate to sell stuff. And what's going to happen if that, like the neighbors say, hey, you know, we're getting a lot of older people? That'd be an ideal place to like connect it to the neighbors. So there's a lot of possibilities. And I don't know why you'd want to sell it for. I mean, you know, we also got land north of the judicial center that we can't build on because of the, of the airport right in the same area. So I mean, we might have a lot of land, but a lot of the land cannot be built on you know, the way they want it to be built on. And if that does go through that developer, is it going to be like a one-story or be like a four-story or five-story? I know that's in the future, but you go by the, like the rest areas out there on the interstate and there are some pretty big buildings out there. Now that would cover up the neighbors. Not that that's all bad, but you know, but I think there's a lot of possibilities. So I would definitely vote no.
And I, I appreciate the, the information and the discussion. And we are certainly, everybody's entitled to however they want to look at it. But I, I do know this as far as developers agreements. If this goes over there and it comes back and it comes from facilities, you're going to know everything about that or you don't have to approve it. That, when the final vote comes, you're going to know everything about it. Am I correct? Otherwise, it ain't going to happen. So therefore all of these questions would be answered. And the comments that you're not interested in selling or Supervisor Story, they're valid. They're valid, certainly. What would have happened if we'd have sold all the land from the county farm? You know, so you never know. And I, I respect everybody's opinion on this, but we've got the motion on the floor and we've had a request for a roll call vote. And is there any other discussion? I want to make sure everybody gets their bite at the apple here. I don't, I don't see any, so we'll have a roll call vote then.
All supervisors present, please vote on your microphone. Supervisor joining us online Supervisor McCullough, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough votes yes. Supervisor Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas votes yes. Supervisor Prochnow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow votes yes. Supervisor Gilbert, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert votes yes. Supervisor Breslin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Breslin votes yes. Supervisor Breslin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Breslin votes yes. Supervisor Quinn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn votes yes. That commences the votes. All votes have been tallied. That passes.
And that concludes our short educational parliamentary procedure. I ask for this too.
Here. The mic was off.
I'm sorry. I can speak up. Thank you for the, thank you for the good discussion and, and various points of view. That's why we're here and that's, I, it's government in action. I think it's good. Next order of business is 11B Broadband Task Force Resolution Endorsement of 24/7 Telecom for BEAT projects. We need a motion in a second. Speaking to it, Bob Bauer. Is it a motion? Bob Bauer moves. Is there a second? Larry Bjork seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Bob Bauer could answer him, I think, or Dan Dunbar can answer him.
Defer to Dan, been working real close with these guys all along, so he probably held defer to Dan. He's already up there anyway, so.
I had a feeling. So this particular resolution is for 24/7 telecom. This is to endorse them for any project for the BEAT, which is broadband equity and deployment funding through the state. So this is any project south of Highway 170. They currently don't necessarily have their eyes on any of them, but, uh, we wanted to make sure that we gave them the opportunity should they, uh, desire one in the, uh, in the future rounds.
Uh, any questions regarding this resolution? Appreciate the hard work that the, uh, Broadband Task Force did and Dan Dunbar. Uh, very, uh, as the COVID, uh, situation showed, uh, broadband's very important for the rural areas, and I'm right as moving forward. Uh, oh, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by, excuse me, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Um, maybe you should ask Dan about how Dunn County ranks in the state as far as, uh, getting broadband into rural areas.
Is, is really good a ranking or just, uh, a feeling? Uh, we, we've done a very good job, and, and I, I was going to save it for the next motion, but, um, you know, we, it's, I've, I've said this before, but it's the providers that we have in the area that have put in the, a, a whole lot of extra work, and they're the ones that are really taking a lot of the risk in doing that. And one of them has learned a lot about parliamentary procedure and transit departments and everything who's been in the audience for, for this whole time. And of course, it's the last resolution, so the next one. Uh, but Deanna is here from Mosaic Telecom, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for the educational deal there, Dan. Uh, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We move on to, uh, 11B, number two, Resolution Endorsement of Mosaic Technologies for BEED Projects. We need a motion in a second. Who moves to? Bob Bauer moves, is there a second? Larry Bjork seconds. And I should imagine you want to defer to Dan on this too?
Yep. So I mentioned Deanna with Mosaic, uh, very involved in all of the projects. Mosaic has, uh, done a lot of work in the town of Grant most recently, and Deanna had worked a lot on that application, spent plenty of time on that application. Um, so once again, just a shout out to the providers in our area and, uh, and the extra work that they do in order to make this happen. Uh, Mosaic, this, this, uh, particular resolution is to endorse Mosaic for all projects north of Highway 170, of which they are looking at, is it five pro, pro, project units, um, around the, uh, in the town of Hay River? Um, and there will be a public meeting on February 10th at six o'clock at the, uh, Hay River Town Hall for anybody who is interested in doing that. That's one of the, the largest areas in Dunn County that is yet unserved. Um, so Mosaic is pursuing some funding in order to cover that, and that's really the thing that is, is going to put us over the top, that, that's going to get all but about 20 houses in, in Dunn County covered. So, uh, we're really excited about that and, uh, and the work that Mosaic is doing for that, so.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'd, I'd like to thank Deanna and her administrative assistant for being at the meeting today.
Right. He gets to skip civics class.
Next order of business is 11A or BC, Planning, Resources and Development, Ordinance Rezone, uh, GA to GC Dunn County Transfer Station. I need a motion in a second. I have Supervisor Morehouse move, second. Supervisor Kinnear seconds, speaking to the motion. Supervisor Quinn, would you like to do it offline?
It's pretty straightforward, just, uh, uh, re, rezone of the property to general commercial, which is something the town board approved of also.
Uh, any questions? I see none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That gets us down to our next order of business, 11, the announcements. The next meeting is February 19th, 2025. Put that in your phone, or if you're like me, write it on the calendar. Uh, any other announcements?
Um, if you have your per diem sheets, I will collect those as well. Otherwise, um, on your way out, uh, the Wisconsin Counties Association provided 2025 Discover Wisconsin calendars for all of the supervisors. So feel free to grab a calendar if you so wish on the way out.
We are adjourned. Be safe going home. Thank you.
See y'all next time.